I now call the Des Moines City Council meeting to order for Thursday, October 20th, and I will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, let's let the record reflect that all seven members of the council are present, and do we have any correspondence?
No, Mayor.
All right, it'll be time for a public comment. Thank you. I would just like to remind those participants that any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks or who become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting. You will have three minutes to speak, and I will start with Ms. Stephanie Harris.
I don't know why I expected everyone to clap. Okay. So, my name is Stephanie, I live in Des Moines. I'm here to be really annoying about Cecil Powell Park, as I'm sure you guys have all gotten my email. I want a playground, I want a playground there. I've only lived here in the city since 2018, so I'm not going to go all the way back to when this playground was supposed to happen prior to me living here, but since 2018. I know that people have asked for the playground, we want the playground, there's no playground. We have no playground on the South End that's accessible during the school hours. Our school playgrounds are closed. We have Saltwater State Park, which is pay-to-play. You have to park at the top and walk down a huge hill if you cannot pay for the Discovery Pass or the $10 parking. This is not disability-friendly, is not out-of-shape-friendly, it's not child-friendly to walk up and down this hill. We have no accessible playground on the South End. I did, I sent the email, I received correspondence back that the park was going to be built in 2023. I pulled up this budget, and it's not scheduled for 2023, it's not scheduled at all, so I was just wondering where it shows it's scheduled for 2023. I do realize now, I just learned that this wasn't like an ask-and-answer deal, so I'll ask my questions and then maybe somebody will email me answers. But I do, I did hear it was scheduled, I do not see it scheduled, so I would like to confirm a date of when it is scheduled to be built. I know in 2016 it was on the schedule, and the amount of money what is different than what's on, than what's planned, but not yearly planned, it just says like project money. And the project money is actually lower budget now than it was in 2016, so I'm curious, is the playground going to be smaller? Is the project smaller? What, what happened to the, like, do we have a bigger idea and now we're getting a small? I would, I mean, I'm happy either way, playground, but I am curious, you know, is the money lower because we're getting less of a playground? The email that I received back said that bidding was happening, and I'm very interested in how this works. Do we, as the people that live in the neighborhood, get access to this playground? Do we get to do, like, is the bid, these are the three designs, and we get to have say in what our children play? Or is the bid just you guys? Is there a design? Who's doing the designing? Is the design already decided since it's scheduled for 2023, as I was told in my email? I understand nobody's answering the questions, but these are mine. I also proposed a crosswalk for that playground from 250th to 13th Place South. Nobody stops. Was that three minutes?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I still stand by my crosswalk. Next, next month.
Ms. Harris, stay by, during the city manager's report, I think Mr. Murgis can give a little bit of clarity and then follow up later, too, so just, just, just hold on for that. All right. Moving on to Ms. Felicia Wilson.
We don't expect applause. Okay, good evening.
By the way, you get five minutes because you're from the King County Library System?
Okay, but I only planned for one for me and three for him.
Well, do you want applause, too?
No. I want this to be over with if we had to really talk about it. Good evening. First, I would like to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to speak about the great services offered at King County Library System. My name is Felicia Wilson, and I'm the Regional Manager of the Soundview Region of the, for the King County Library System. Des Moines Library is one of the five libraries that I'm responsible for in my region. Woodmont, SeaTac, Federal Way, and 320th are the other four libraries. Along with me is Eric Matthews, who's the Library and Information Services Manager, who supervises the librarians at Des Moines. We would like to invite you, our partners in Des Moines, to explore the great programs and services offered in person and online at our libraries. Now, we'll let Eric talk about some of the programming, programs happening at Des Moines Library, and our Makerspace located in Federal Way Library, which opened, had a grand opening on September 17. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Felicia, thank you, council. Like Felicia says, KCLS does offer a wide range of programming, both online and in person. Here at the Des Moines Library, we have a regular family storytime in person every Thursday at 10:30. We also do some great online programming with local partners, such as SR3. We have an online informational event about what they do in our communities on Friday, October 21st at 11:00. Another great partner that we have online storytimes with is the Mass Center down at Redondo. We have a sea critter storytime that happens online, the next one is occurring on November 4th at 11:00. Those are really great. They're in the aquarium showing the species and specimens that they have there. Sometimes they're out on the beach, if it's low tide, it's a really great program, but I think everybody enjoys. We also offer a teen chill time, the first and last Wednesdays of every month, at the Des Moines Library. And coming up on November 8th at 6:30, we have an informational section, informational program on getting college finance, financing for students. Speaking of education, we have our Online Study Zone program, which was one of the first in the country provided by libraries during the pandemic, and we've had great success with that. During the last school year, there was over 700 students a month, we were averaging, logging in to receive tutor support. Over at the Woodmont Library, we also have an in-person storytime Mondays from 10:30 to 11:15. And like I said, our Makerspace in Federal Way has had its grand opening back in September, and there is a wide range of equipment that you can go and try out on our open labs, and we offer, also offer a lot of online programming in that as well. I'd also like to mention that both the Des Moines and Woodmont Libraries also have a teletranslation service where we can help facilitate information needs for our patrons via video conferencing. That's available in about 34 languages, including American Sign Languages, American Sign Language, and we have an additional 100 languages that we can facilitate over the phone. And also at our Woodmont Library, it is a site for one of our telehealth connection sites, where we provide equipment, where providers can schedule appointments with community members, and we provide a space and equipment for them to have a virtual visit there. And Woodmont also provides equipment to facilitate online interviews for our community members or any other kind of teleconferencing services that they need, then they can book that in advance. So, and I would be remiss to say that this week is National Friends of the Library, and without the support of our community and our friends of the library, community members giving support to our programs, we wouldn't be able to offer such robust offerings that we do, and we look forward to offering more coming next year, and we invite you all and everybody to the library, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It looked like you provided some information to forward us on some of the dates and so forth?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, moving on to Azeb Hagos, did I say that right this time? Or was I close? I try, I really do.
You're getting there.
Okay.
I still have faith in you, you're going to get it.
No, next week you can give me a tutorial.
I'll pronounce it, it's Azeb Hagos, and Director Hagos for the Highline Public Schools, and I'm here on behalf of that. But first, really quickly, I wanted to jump in and show some appreciation for a few of our speakers. One, the King County Library System. I take my son to many of the library system programming. In fact, my son is here, and he participated in the Makerspace program, and they talk about the scientific method and the questions, and they're teaching this to a six-year-old. It is fabulous programming, and I just appreciate what you guys do, and advocacy on behalf of our playgrounds, so just thank you for the things that you guys are all doing. Okay, so I'm here on behalf of Highline Public Schools to talk a little bit about what we have coming up with our new superintendent. Dr. Duran is holding a listening session for our community. He's done it across the district for all five of the, for all four of the other towns within Highline Public Schools, and we are set to have ours for Des Moines on November 1st at 6:30 at the Mount Rainier High School Theater. And the purpose of these listening sessions is to hear from our community, to know what it is that folks are experiencing in our public schools, and if we are holding up and being true to our promise about knowing each child by name, strength, and need, then the most important part to that is preparing our kids for a future that they choose. And so we want to hear if that's true for the children in our community, and then we also want to get some feedback if that's not happening for a specific child, a family, or a group of folks, some ideas and some strategies as we work on creating some new initiatives moving forward with Dr. Duran as our new superintendent. So this is just an opening invitation, I've already invited the entire council member group, along with the mayor, deputy mayor, and I'm not sure if I sent one to you, our city manager, but I hope I did, because you do some amazing work, and I appreciate the things that you are doing to support our kiddos, especially with the Marina Development, and connecting some of our kids with some of the things that are happening from Maritime High School. So I do appreciate your work, I hope I invited you, if I didn't, wasn't on purpose. I will get one to you. But anyways, that's what this is about, and I just wanted to kind of just let this out in the community, let folks know to come, whether or not you have children in our schools, you still have, add value and have something to say. If you'd like to add your opinion, please show. That's what this is for.
Thank you. If, I just want to make one quick comment. So, we've had the pleasure of having Ivan here for about a two-hour discussion as an introductory discussion, and last week we had, I think it was even this Tuesday, we had Ivan and Scott Logan came down, and we gave them about a two-hour tour of the city and of the Marina, and looking for ways that there may be opportunities for Maritime High School, some of those programs to be associated with the city, which we're very excited about. So, that relationship's tied already, and we think Ivan's just awesome, and look forward to working with him. Thanks.
That's great, and if there's anything I can do to support that work, I'm available for that as well, so thank you.
Thank you so much, and we'll definitely see you on the first. Moving on to our last person, Deborah Hale? It's A-A-E-A-E?
H-A-E-H-L.
H-L, okay. Thank you.
I think that's amazing. Hi, my name's Deborah Hale, and I live in Redondo, and good evening to the council members and to my neighbors. I am here to talk about my favorite chat, Redondo traffic, and specifically, I live on 281st Street, and the problem that we seem to keep having and reoccurring is that the traffic, especially the kys that have souped up their cars and, you know, changed their mufflers and whatever, they hit the bottom of Redondo Beach, and it's a straight shot all the way up 281st, all the way till you get to 16th Avenue South. It's a lot of room for them to run. Last month, my neighbor who's with me, her car got run into. It's just a matter of public safety, and we've spoken about this multiple times, I'm just so worried someone's going to get hurt, and we don't know what else to suggest. We've suggested speed bombs, speed cameras with tickets, rumble strips, we just need to have a little conversation and decide how we can make our neighborhood safer. We have, I'm so lucky to live in Redondo, I love it, and my neighbors are the best, but we need some help. I'm asking you, please, give us some ideas, work with us to slow that traffic down before someone's seriously hurt. Thank you, have a good night.
Yeah, Mike, Michael, go ahead.
Just, ma'am, one quick comment. Some of the things you mentioned are things that we're in the process of reviewing, and hopefully there's some outcomes that address that. Sure.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Before we get started, I just want to say happy birthday to Mr. Friend. They told me to embarrass you. You don't look a day over 90.
Yeah, he looked young when he came here.
Yeah. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, good evening, everyone, council and our citizens. So, a couple of items tonight. The first one is, it seems, you know, like COVID just has distorted time, because it's been probably three years since we had Nancy back as come and talk about regional housing and the value of affordable housing and the importance of it. And from that, the city decided to participate in Skip, and so we're going to have presentations this evening about Skip, but I think that one thing that we have learned and are committed to is that regional solutions are the only way these kinds of problems are going to get solved, and cities like Des Moines that are small, without the resources, but joining with other cities potentially can make a difference. So we're really excited about that. And with that, I'm going to introduce Nicole Nordholm, our Parks Director, and she'll take it from there. Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, mayor and council, Nicole Nordholm, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Senior Services. I am here tonight to introduce Angela Sanfilippo. She is our Executive Manager for the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners Group that Michael was mentioning. We, as a city, have been a part of this group since 2019, and it's a regional partnership to work on homelessness and other issues in our area. Tonight, she'll be going over the 2023 budget and work plan for Skip. So, with that, Angela?
Nicole, if I might mention, we've also had, Rochelle has been involved with this process, I think Eric Lane. I know Tracy Buxton from our deputy mayor has been involved with the board there, so thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Thank you, city manager. Oh, and she pulled it up for me, thank you. Angela Sanfilippo, for the record, Executive Manager with South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. I do want to spend most of our time talking about the 2023 work plan and budget process, but before I do that, it is helpful, I don't get the opportunity to be here as often as I would like. We've got 11 jurisdictions as part of our partnership, and we're a small but mighty team of two at Skip, with a lot of staff support, as city manager mentioned, with here in Des Moines, Nicole, Rochelle, and Eric, and council member Buxton, who sits on our executive board, but it is hard to make the rounds as often as we would like in person. So I want to take a minute to ground us in the Skip mission. We are a regional entity of 11 jurisdictions across South King County, 10 cities, as well as King County, representing our unincorporated areas, working together to create a coordinated, comprehensive, and equitable approach to increasing access to affordable housing. In order to achieve that mission, we've identified three overarching objectives that really helped to develop our annual work plan and help us to measure progress over time. The first one is with regard to sharing out technical information and resources to promote sound housing policy and planning. The second one is around coordinating our public resources to attract, to attract greater private as well as public investment into affordable housing in South King County. City manager put it very articulately, each of our communities don't have a whole lot of funding to go towards affordable housing on their own, but pooled together, we have the opportunity to leverage both private and public investments. And then thirdly, around outreach, education, and advocacy, we provide a unified voice to advocate for the needs of South King County across our region and at the state level, and we also provide educational outreach and engagement opportunities for our executive board members, but also for the greater public. So a little bit about the work that we've been doing in 2021, just to kind of catch everyone up to speed, we were formed in 2019, and 2020 saw the very first staff come on board for the organization. In 2021, we appointed, our executive board appointed our inaugural advisory board. This is a group of community members that are deeply connected to the South King County communities that we're hoping to serve through Skip. Those are those folks that are most vulnerable to displacement and cost burden throughout our region. So the folks on our advisory board have both personal as well as professional connections to South King County communities in the affordable housing as well as homelessness service provision. We also, as part of our work, have identified a goal of increasing the opportunity for philanthropic investments. In order to do that, we're working towards establishing a fundraising arm for Skip, and in 2021, we received Washington State nonprofit status as part of that effort. We also stood up our Skip Housing Capital Fund, so nine of our member cities are pooling resources from House Bill 1406, that is a sales tax credit recapture specifically for affordable housing or related services. We went through a long process, as council member Buxton can attest to, to develop consensus around our funding guidelines, as well as administrative procedures for how those funds will be allocated, process for that, both internally as well as outreach into our community and into our affordable housing developers, to really get the interest into this funding and build affordable housing in South King County. We supported six of our partner jurisdictions through the first round of housing action plan development and adoption. Also, each year, we adopt state and federal legislative priorities. This is a way that we can build consensus with our South King County communities around both state and federal issues. And then towards the end of the year, we were awarded Department of Commerce funds for a collaborative effort for a body of work to implement some of those housing action plans. So that was the Housing Action Plan Implementation Grant, that five of our cities pooled funds towards building out an affordable housing inventory that includes both regulated and unregulated affordable housing across our South King County region. So it is a five-city partnership, but it will cover the South, the entire South King County region. And then just a little bit about the work of 2022, this is like, speed through two years of work here, so bear with me. We are right in the middle of executing our first funding round of the Skip Housing Capital Fund. We had applications due in the middle of September, and we are working through a process with our advisory board to review those applications and bring forth a recommendation to the executive board by the end of the year. We also, building on the Washington State nonprofit status, we have submitted our 501(c)(3) application to the federal government. We are in a queue, what I understand is a fairly long COVID backup, but that nonprofit status will be dated at the date of submittal, so we are in that queue and kind of awaiting that. We've heard from our philanthropic organizations that that is the best mechanism to create a tool for them to invest in that fundraising effort for affordable housing. We also coordinate a space every other month with our affordable housing developers, as well as city and county planners, to collaborate and coordinate around barriers to increasing housing construction and the preservation of affordable housing across the South King County region. We've built an inventory and assessment of existing housing policies. This is really a mechanism to share information and resources amongst our staff across the region, looking at the types of policies and programs that are in play in our neighboring communities, seeing what might be working, maybe what needs improvement, but helping to really share that technical information and resources amongst all of the communities that we work with. And I touched on this a little bit with the Department of Commerce, grant funding, we are working on building out that inventory, as well as monitoring program for the affordable housing. As I said, both the regulated and the unregulated, those are affordable housing units that are more vulnerable to market pressures, and we're right in the middle of that work, expecting for that to be done towards the end of the year or the very beginning of next year. We also, on our 2022 work plan, have a goal to work towards some longer-term goals and objectives. I will say, this is one item that will probably carry over to 2023. We, as I said, are a small team of two, but half of this year I've been a small team of one, so we weren't able to get to as many of these as we would have liked. So our strategic planning, long-term goal setting, will likely begin in 2023. In terms of our work plan and budget process... In terms of, um, our work plan and budget process, um, this is our annual, um, work plan and budget process that we go through. We work with our staff work group, as well as our Advisory Board, um, for the plan development, um, bringing forth a recommendation to the Executive Board, um, before it is adopted by the Executive Board, and then comes to each of our member jurisdictions for approval per our inter-local agreement. All of our member jurisdictions, um, approve both our work plan and budget before it is, um, goes into play. Little bit about the 2023 work plan, um, just in terms of, um, overarching organization, it looks a little bit different this year. Um, we have five goal statements, um, that help to advance skip's mission and objectives, and those are really prioritized, um, so that staff has some built-in flexibility, um, both because we are a small team and, um, staff changes can significantly impact our capacity, um, but also, um, to make sure that we can respond to emerging issues as they come up. So, we've identified areas that are critical, those are very necessary to carry out our inter-local agreement and the agreement that we've made to each other as a regional partnership. And then, important items are also a priority, but not necessary, to, um, carry out that agreement. And then, we just have one item, um, listed as desirable, it's kind of a would-be-nice-to-get-to, um, in 2023. The work plan, um, you do have in front of you, so I am just going to, um, highlight a few key areas under each of those goals. Under the first, um, goal, this is, um, really about the, um, strategy and direction of skip, and I wanna just highlight, um, the first item there under "critical." We wanna make sure that we are building, um, a long-term strategy for the skip's housing capital fund. This includes identifying and exploring dedicated resources, um, of revenue for affordable housing, um, and really building on, um, the pooled resources that we have currently through those sales tax credit recapture, um, and building out that fund so that it's a more significant resource, um, for affordable housing across the region. Building a little bit on that, um, the second goal is around the long-term sustainability of that skip housing capital fund. And so, we have, um, several items in this category that are critical. Um, we will, um, fully execute, um, the funding allocations through approval by our member jurisdictions in the beginning of 2023. Um, we'll also have, um, the contractual documents, um, in distribution of funds from this 2022 round and the beginning of 2023. And then, an important body of this work that I've touched on a little bit, um, is, um, working with our private investors, as well as lenders, philanthropic organizations, really thinking about how we can maximize the leverage of our public investment, um, through partnerships with the private sector. And then, we also work collaboratively with our public funders across the region. So, really important for us to work at both the, um, state and local level to promote shared housing policy goals, um, alignment in our goals around affordable housing, 'cause we're recognizing that we can't do this alone. Um, we pooled resources, um, from nine of our cities, um, but we still, um, our funding round this year was $1.5 million, um, and most of the projects are significantly more than that to develop. Um, so, we really rely on alignment with our other public funders to be able to make those projects pencil out. Third goal, um, area is working with our partner jurisdictions to, um, develop local policies and programs that help to, um, both protect affordable housing stock, um, as well as accelerate access to affordable housing. So, this includes some regular updates to some of the items I talked about with regard to the housing policy matrix as a way to, um, share technical resources and information. It also, um, includes convening a group of city and county land use planners, um, they, um, have a space to coordinate and collaborate around best practices, um, and skip will continue to convene that group through the comprehensive plan updates and development of housing chapters. And then, representation, so, um, making sure that, um, South King County continues to be represented at local and regional meetings and forums that help to advance skip's mission. So, really highlighting the needs and opportunities of South King County, um, and representing, um, our, um, unified, um, needs around affordable housing. And then, the last item is thinking about educational opportunities. So, we coordinate with housing organizations, as well as other stakeholder groups, to provide education, um, and engagement opportunities across the region. Um, and then, we also coordinate monthly Executive Board educational items as part of our monthly meetings. Those are really to keep our Executive Board informed on emerging issues, current data, and research, to make sure that their, um, decisions, um, and priority setting as we go through, like, our annual work plan, um, are really grounded in what's going on. And then, the last piece of this that I want to talk a little bit about is the budget. Um, so, along with our work plan, we also have, um, the 2023 budget in front of you. That 2023 budget, um, does include some incremental increases to our jurisdiction contributions. It includes the two full-time positions that I mentioned, the Executive Manager and Program Coordinator. It also includes compensation, um, a nominal compensation for our Advisory Board members, recognizing that, um, for folks, um, it can be a significant barrier, um, to their participation if they aren't able to cover, um, transportation, or childcare, or time away from work, um, costs that can be a significant barrier, especially when we're talking about wanting to hear the voices of our most vulnerable populations. And then, lastly, um, just to highlight, it also includes professional services, primarily legal services, um, for fully executing the housing capital fund contracts. So, with that, um...
Ma'am, there, there's, uh, we, we had a public comment, we don't take comments or questions from the public. This is separate, this is a, this is a different event, that you're talking about the city budget, and that's separate from this, and, and, uh, if you were to make comment, it would be during a public comment, which is at the next meeting on October 27th for the city. This is, this is separate. Okay, you may continue.
I, I'm actually, um, just, one more slide, I just wanted to highlight, um, the City of Des Moines contribution. So, 2022 contribution was 8,625. Our proposal, um, is to increase that. This helps us to work towards a balanced budget, um, and then, you'll see the proposed 2023 contribution of 9,919. We, um, originally adopted, um, a projected budget when skip was formed and projected population tiers that our members contributed to. That was before, um, Auburn became our administering agency and before staff was hired. So, we have been, um, over the course of the last couple years, um, been, um, incrementally increasing our jurisdiction contributions, as well as spending down some of our cost savings from the first couple years, um, to help us reach a balanced budget by 2025. And with that, um, I'm happy to, um, take any questions that council may have.
Before I have council do comments, I'm gonna open the floor back to Michael.
Um, yeah, thank you very much. Um, just, just so people are aware, it's not that the city has, has done nothing relative to affordable housing. Couple of examples are the Adriana, which provides for seniors, um, Waterview Crossing, which is over 300 units of affordable housing up on 216th and, um, Pack Highway, and then further south on the west side of Pack Highway, Point by Vintage, I don't recall exactly how many units, but I believe it's well over 100. So, those are all affordable housing, um, projects that this, exist in the city that have not been part of skip. But, just so that you understand, we've, you know, had development along those lines. Thanks.
All right, open the floor to council. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, it's good to see that you have a body.
Thank you, councilmember, yeah, it's good to see you in person.
Yeah, and, um, uh, I just wanna, to my colleagues who haven't watched, uh, the speakers that you've had are just outstanding. I mean, you know, you go to a lot of these regional things, and the information has just been tremendous, but it's also created a frustration for me, because, you know, they get you worked up about what needs to happen, and, um, and it's taking a long time, you know, and I'm not trying to stress you out, but, uh, so, when is the inventory to be completed? Do we know, and I mean, I mean the stock, yeah?
Yeah, the, um, for the affordable housing inventory?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is, um, scheduled, um, we'll have a draft, pretty significant draft to kind of, staff to play around with, kick the tires a little bit, make sure it's working, um, by the end of the year, and then, um, they'll finalize it, um, January 2023.
And, and my other question is just, um, eh, eh, 'cause I haven't heard it, is there any interest in, uh, see, I'm struck by, with new housing, we have these different requirements for SEPTED and make, making sure that they're safe and so on, and, um, we have, you know, a significant number of apartments and here and everything, and people are concerned about the safety of existing units. And it strikes me that that may affect the uptake of people. And so, is, eh, eh, has there been any discussion about, like, how you could improve that, um, in existing, uh, systems?
Yeah, there, there's been a lot of discussion, um, I think, related to that comment around, um, preservation of housing, quality of housing that we see, um, especially in our multifamily buildings that might be aging or have deferred maintenance, um, things like that. I think part of that is what you're referring to. And I think, um, the affordable housing inventory that we talked a little bit about, um, with the, specifically with regard to the unregulated affordable housing, so, housing that is, um, in the private market, doesn't have any kind of affordability restrictions on it, but is affordable to some of our low or moderate income households, being able to identify, um, properties or neighborhoods that have a significant amount of that to, um, both inform policy discussion, but also think about opportunities. So, like you said, um, increase, um, an investment into a project. Yeah, increase the investment into the project and then get a public benefit back of, uh, of an affordability requirement, something like that.
Very good to hear, thank you.
Councilmember, if I may, um, one of the things we learned early on is that substandard housing is not affordable housing, it's simply substandard housing. And so, problems that occur with that relative to safety, or quality, or, or the integrity of the structure relative to rain, or all those types of things, that's not affordable housing, that's not what you're talking about. And so, any affordable housing project associated within the city would have to comply with city standards for development, including SEPTED and everything else. Just a point.
Yeah, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Just a point of clarity, there, there was a question from the public about the budget and numbers that were, that was referred to, and I just wanted to clarify that, we have, we have quite a bit more detail that we have been provided in our packets that is also available online to the public on our website. And so, when she was talking about, um, you, the extra information that was not on the screen, and we do have it here, all of us have it here, so, I just wanted to make that clear, for clarification.
All right, and if, if, if you were talking about this particular item, there is an order of things that would have been in the public comment, you would have asked the questions, is what I was in the order. I just naturally assumed you were talking about the budget. There's, we've, we're done with the public comment portion, so, so that's where we're at, ma'am, and I apologize, but, no, no, ma'am. Yeah, ma'am, I'm sorry, but, uh, you, you would be out of order in this particular case, so I can't allow you to intervene. All right, um, I would just like to say that, um, that, you know, when Nancy Backus came to us a few years back and so forth, I think you've made tremendous progress, and I wanna compliment you and your team for that, and the Executive Board as well. So, with that being said, uh, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, um, the next issue I wanna talk about is emergency management, there's a couple of things here. Shannon, our Director of Emergency Preparedness and Emergency Management, was unable to be here tonight. We had planned on, um, honoring and acknowledging our CERT graduates, um, but we will move that to a future meeting when Shannon's here. A couple of things today, October 20th, um, the State of Washington held, um, the Great Shakeout, which was, uh, sort of a mock, um, emergency event that required, um, our staff to, um, you know, protect themselves initially, and then to evacuate the building. And it's always interesting doing those types of exercises, 'cause you learn things. And we learned some things that we can institute that if the real event were to occur, would probably make, or would provide for a safer environment, um, and the safety of all of our staff and anyone in City Hall at the time. So, we went through that. I wanna mention that this evening, um, on your consent agenda, there is a, um, an item to rescind the emergency proclamation that we put in place in early March, as a, as a function of closely following the directions we received from the Governor, from King County, from CDC, the Center for Disease Control, from the federal government, um, and for, uh, the emergency management process. And that's been in effect since, um, the 5th of March, I believe, 2020, and is now being rescinded. The Governor's, um, proclamation ends October 31st, and so, that item that you have, um, in your packet is for us to, uh, to rescind those powers. Basically, those powers were granted to the City Manager to take steps necessary to address the pandemic, and to come back to council after the fact if necessary for ratification of what we had done. And so, that's, that's worked extremely well, and in that vein, I'd like to ask, um, AJ, our HR Director, to, uh, give us a brief presentation on emergency management and our response to, uh, to COVID. Thanks, AJ.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Uh, tonight's presentation is an overview of the City of Des Moines', um, response to the COVID-19 pandemic, our reactions to the requirements and guidelines that came from the county and state, and how staff under the direction of our City Manager partnered with South King Fire and Rescue to anticipate the needs of our staff and community, uh, to ensure that everyone's, uh, was as safe as possible. Next slide, please. Um, so, our, um, COVID-19, uh, emergency proclamation, um, tonight, as Michael mentioned, we are looking at, uh, rescinding, uh, 22053, which was the COVID-19 proclamation of emergency. During the pandemic, we had two primary areas of focus. Um, one was the health and safety of our residents and staff, and actually, there's three, it looks like, up here. Two was to ensure continuity of operations and services to the community. And so, as we go through the slide, I'm gonna provide you a timeline of the actions taken by Washington State, King County, and then our reaction and the actions that we took related to, um, the information that came from the state and King County Health. The initial predictions about the coronavirus were that there was gonna be a surge, and then the virus was gonna end. I think we all remember, it's like, oh, we'll be hunkered down for 90 days, and, you know, March of 2020, and here we are, um, still experiencing COVID almost three years later. Washington State experienced six waves, actually, and the worst surge was from December 2021 into January of 2022. Next slide, please. So, I won't read all of these to you, but I'll just highlight some of the important things. The first case of COVID discovered in the nation was January 21st, um, 2020. At that time, we immediately partnered with South King Fire and Rescue to monitor the virus. Um, the City Manager signed the emergency proclamation just days after the State of Washington did. In March of 2020, the state began closing businesses, canceling the events, and advising people against gathering in large groups. We followed the same recommendations, we closed Park and Rec Senior Services, we canceled our events, programming, and rentals, and closed city facilities to public, to the public. Next slide, please. So, again, I'll just highlight some of the, um, important things here, uh, the mask mandate, uh, was in, um, was ordered statewide, the city immediately implemented our mask mandate, uh, the eats program was created and implemented, and the local restaurant certificates were distributed at Thursday's, uh, senior lunch. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. So, uh, again, some of the highlights here, we, uh, the city participated in a number of events, giving away masks out to the local community, um, we did that over several months. And actually, um, due to a lot of the safety measures that we were taking, um, here at the city, we didn't actually have our first, uh, COVID positive of one of our own city employees until November 2020. So, pretty, um, pretty remarkable, considering. Next slide, please. Um, so, uh, here in 2021, uh, the vaccines became available on April 20... Um so uh here in twenty twenty-one, uh the vaccines became available in April twenty twenty-one. Uh the city leadership, we actively encouraged all of our staff to become vaccinated, and we offered weekly information regarding vaccinations in clinics and things like that. We also purchased rapid tests for our staff and made sure that they had tests, not only um for here at work, but to take home. So that was very helpful. And then in the early summer, um small groups, we did begin to um start back some of the activities. And so in early summer, small group activities began at the senior center, including the hybrid lunch. And we also in August started to prepare um to get the field house ready to start back for uh before, or excuse me, after school care. And also um during that same vein in August, uh the governor issued a proclamation for childcare workers for vaccine requirement, and we also implemented that for our Parks and Rec staff. Next slide, please. Uh the mask requirements were lifted statewide in March twenty twenty-two. Uh the city also followed the same, and we lifted our mask mandate as well. And uh tonight, as uh city manager Mathias already mentioned, uh we are looking to rescind our city's proclamation of emergency. Next slide, please. So just a few highlights of uh the vaccine incentive program. We introduced it to the staff in April of twenty um twenty-two, actually. And uh right now, um staff are eligible for a total of five hundred dollars. It's three fifty for proof of being fully vaccinated. Fully vaccinated's in quotes because it's defined by CDC requirements, just so you know. And a hundred and fif- and an additional hundred and fifty dollars if they provide uh proof of booster. So currently, we've had a hundred and eleven staff take advantage of this incentive, so that's about sixty-two percent of our staff. And the program is set to expire in February twenty twenty-three. Uh the other thing I'd like to mention is it's available for all staff, regardless of status. If you're extra hire, full-time, regular, if you work at the city, you're eligible for this program. Next slide, please. Again, this is just um some data points. So this represents our positive cases of COVID nineteen. Only in for City Hall, PD tracked their s- staff, the the impacts of their staff differently. Uh most notable about this chart is you can see that we had a spike. Uh that top line is green, that's twenty twenty-two. We had a spike in July. Uh we believe that's due to the Omicron virus, so we experienced the same that the um the greater community at large was. I think one of the most notable, another thing that's very notable about this chart is that if you uh we had staff in the building and that basically we were pretty flat until twenty twenty-two. So we were pretty successful, I believe, in mitigating some of the risks associated with COVID in our workplace. Next slide, please. Uh again, this is informational supplemental pandemic leave. And so this is leave that was associated with absences um due to preventing or containing the spread of COVID nineteen. Um the the numbers to the left are hours that staff are out on leave. So if you look in twenty twenty, that's twenty thousand hours. Um and you can see a decrease in the hours from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. Some of that is due to the change in the quarantine periods. You know, as the CDC got more information and the CD- and the quarantine periods changed, we had less staff out on that. Um I think probably the most notable piece about this is that this is people that were unavailable for work, yet it didn't impact our ability to continue operations. That's pretty significant when you look at those hours. And that concludes my presentation.
Thanks, AJ. Um we'll take if there are any questions, but one thing I want to point out, knock on wood, the city was able to um go through the pandemic with zero fatalities to city staff. And it's something we're very pleased and proud of. And it had to do with effectively utilizing partnerships and and other aspects of this and in finding solutions. Mayor, if there are any questions?
Counsel, any comments or questions? Councilmember Pennington?
Well, um I was gonna pull item number four to have a a conversation about this, but I think this is probably more timely. I um I just wanted to to point out, and and thank you AJ for the overview. And what probably most folks don't understand or realize is the level and the intensity of the work that was gone on behind the scenes during those two years. And I can attest to that both for what the city did and what your fire district did. Is I I became the chief of January, in January twenty, and a month later, I had a worldwide pandemic that we had to to work with. The partnership between the fire district and the city wa- was something that was pretty incredible. And, you know, uh item four is is rescinding the um the emergency proclamation. And, you know, a- as this, the 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 reason this is is important is because um the emergency proclamation in 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 what, in January, uh the federal government said that um or the the um s- the Department of Health declared a a a public health emergency. And then in February, uh the governor, Washington state governor, declared a state of emergency. The city manager on the fifth of March um uh issued an emergency proclamation, and the city council ratified that on the twenty-sixth of March. And and what this did is this allowed the city to access federal funds and access the help that it needed to to provide the continuity of government, to provide uh uh supplies to our citizens. And and probably one of the the really important pieces is the Emergency Operations Center that's located in in your fire station up here in the city, up on twenty-fourth and two twenty-third. We got together, um so the some some of, at at the time, my staff and and s- and the city staff, the senior staff, met up there. And we were to put together in a matter of, what was it, maybe a couple of weeks, um an emergency operations center that is very close to what you would would see on, it was on a smaller scale at at King County. And the reason that's important, the reason that's important is because it 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 made a connection to King County Emergency Management. And that connection and and that relationship paid dividends to the city and the fire district. And and that, in turn, paid dividends to you all as citizens and and our ability to access medical supplies that were difficult to get, to to um have purchase agreements that um were on a on a an international basis. Um to bring those here to, and and again, the continuity of government, the 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 monies that was accessed from the federal government to support uh the operations here, to support our businesses, to support our citizens, to um to support our students and seniors. I mean, it really, it was about relationships, and it was about going down a dark hole where you didn't know where the end was and you couldn't see where you were going, but you were going with with friends and you were and you were managing and you were working through that. And I think that um again, it's it, I I wish I could, I don't know how to describe it. The 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 feeling um that this brought to everybody that provides services to you, you our citizens and our businesses. It we, everybody did the best they could in an unknown. And I think that the city did pretty, pretty darn good. I'll I'll clean it up. But it 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 really did, and and um and it's reflective, and and the information that you've seen this evening, um it's reflective in the leadership because there were a couple of folks that that had to make the the final decisions on both sides of the table. And it was city manager Mathias and at ti- at that time, myself. And and it it was, but none of that could have been accomplished without the support of our staff in in each agency. And the work that was done, the ability to find new ways to do work. I mean, just think of how many years we've done things a certain way, and we've had to had to make that change. And and I'll go back a little bit farther. In August of of two thousand and seventeen, the city of Des Moines really got interested in emergency management. Now, Commander Richards and myself have done it for the city for probably over thirty years, between my tenure up at the Fire District Twenty-Six and and hers at Police Department. But in two thousand and seventeen, the city of Des Moines partnered with the city of Federal Way in the in the Greater Federal Way Emergency Management Operations Center. And when I say partnered, they they the 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 city took an educational opportunity with that with that group. And they went back to the Emergency Management Institute, which is in on the grounds of the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland. And that is where I think the light came on for a lot of folks in the city, that it folks realized that we need to have an emergency operations plan. We need to have some sort of structure. We need to actually fund this. Because there was a time in this city when I said, hey, why don't we, why don't we do something here? And the leadership at that time was, well, if the individual departments want to do it, they can take it out of their budget line. It wasn't a part of the culture here, and it is now. It's very much a part of the culture. And that paid you as citizens and businesses dividends during this pandemic. And and I I probably haven't done it justice in in that you, it's one of those things you have to kind of experience in life. But um the work that that Shannon Kirchberg did, uh the the command staff at the Police Department, were up there every day, working in the Emergency Operations Center along with the Fire District and and providing resources and finding resources. Big stuff. It's 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 set you up, it's set this community up for success in the future. Heaven forbid that that things go a weird way in the world, or even a local event. A plane drops out of the air. It it has really set us up to be successful. And and that's something, Michael, um thank you for your leadership and and being and willing to 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 take a risk and do things that were out of the norm at for that period of time. So anyway, thank you all very much.
Go ahead, Michael.
No, I was just gonna tell Vic the check's in the mail. Thank you for, you know, and 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 it it has special meaning coming from you because you've been doing emergency rescues for, what, thirty years plus?
Almost fifty.
Almost fifty.
Forty-seven.
Okay. And 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 we didn't know, like I've said often, for this whole thing, continuity of operations, response to the community, safety, there was no playbook. Nobody'd been through this. I mean, there'd been a pandemic in this country in what, nineteen twenty was the the previous one. And we had to figure it out as we went. And the only way that happened was the sort of the collaborative effort and thinking of diverse kind of perspectives to get from A to B, not knowing if it was gonna work. And then it kept, we just kept doing each step of the way. So that that's, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Councilmember Pennington. I would agree, you know, you're right. It's a, it's it, for a couple of years on council, it was a a new pass for all of us, going through it, a lot of Zoom meetings and so forth to run the city and so forth, and I thought we were creative. I think the most important thing that uh maybe didn't get emphasized as much is I know we saved lot, through your action and the fire department's action and the Emergency Operations Center and so forth, we saved lives in this community. And, you know, there you can't do the science to put a number to it, but we did. And and we know, we know that pe- people did not get infected in particular cases because of the fast action. I do want to remind the public, though, that COVID has not gone away, and it's still relevant, and we still need to take precautions where necessary, and one of the best ways is the boosters and vaccinations. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, mayor. Uh you can go to Safeway at two sixteen, two seventy-second. You can go to Rad-Aid. You can go to C-Mar tomorrow, eleven thirty AM. They'll give you a ten percent off coupon. This is not over. Um I had three mates go to that fabulous eighteen inning game, and all three came back testing positive. So please do not get complacent. Thank you.
Seeing seeing none? Go ahead.
Thank you. Um a couple more items. So now it's a pleasure to ask Patty, our Assistant Police Chief, who was abandoned by the the chief, to uh talk about flock cameras. Just, we're excited about the possibility here.
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, city council, city manager. Assistant Chief Patty Richards, I am representing Chief Thomas and Assistant Chief Kui, who is the program manager for the flock camera system. Next slide, please. Little bit about the technology and what this is. Basic understanding is these are cameras that are put in place that will read license plates and only license plates. They will not catch Patty running to Dairy Queen and to get an ice cream in the middle of my Weight Watchers diet. Um they are simply and specifically only going to look at license plates. Couple of things that that does for us. It takes the human bias out of crime solving. It's a very objective. It is a vehicle going down the road, not people. Just like as if you're going down the road and you're following a car from behind, what you see is the license plate and that's it. It does some extra things, though. The camera system will alert officers for wanted vehicles. Wanted is a broad term. That's your stolen vehicle, but it is also your missing and endangered person. It's your vehicle that's associated with a silver alert, an amber alert, or something of that nature. When it's entered into the system uh through WASEC, it will alert us that that vehicle is entered, and it gives us enough location to say, that vehicle is southbound on Pack Highway. This is what it looks like, and it's in lane two, and it's wanted or needed or being sought for this reason. A little bit about what it did before, what it can do for us. We had a situation where a business up on Pacific Highway was had a number of drive-by shootings over a period of a couple of weeks. All we had was a tan sedan and the timeframe. If this system would have been in place, we would have a license plate on a tan sedan going through that intersection at that particular point in time, and it gives us a place to start and figure out what's going on. The technology adheres to all state laws that are currently in place. What it is not, it's not gonna catch Patty going to Dairy Queen. There's no facial recognition or any personal identifiable information. It is simply the back of the vehicle, what kind of vehicle it is. It doesn't tell us who's driving, how many people are in it, or anything else like that. And it also is not used for traffic enforcement in any way. The data is stored for thirty days, and then it gets automatically deleted by the uh software that it's part of. Go ahead. Why we need flock cameras? As much as we try, suspects are still committing crimes against persons and property in the city. And if they're not doing it in the city, they're driving through our city. The Pacific Highway Anti-Crime Initiative that's going on is a result of five homicides near Pacific Highway and Kent Des Moines Road last year. And as much as we try, we still have guns and gangs going through our city. I was speaking with a couple of the council members before the meeting. We talked about somebody running from a stolen vehicle in Redondo and tossing a loaded gun into the water in Redondo. Thankfully, we were able to get that gun back, but guns and gangs are still in Des Moines, and this is going to help us. What it is, sixteen strategically placed cameras to capture the evidence that I've talked about. We're going to partner with our fellow ag- or neighboring agencies to help us solve these crimes. Ultimately, we want to reduce crime and increase the quality of life for everybody who works, plays, and lives in the city. And it is a force multiplier. No matter how hard I try, I am never gonna be able to hire enough officers to have them uh looking at every vehicle going through the intersection of six, two sixteen and Pack Highway or Kent Des Moines Road or those different areas where those sixteen cameras are gonna be placed. Next slide. Community involvement and coordination. The cameras have been discussed with both the Police Advisory Board, uh Public Safety and Emergency Management Subcommittee, a number of business meetings along Pacific Highway. The community meetings that we've held, that we've talked about, up to and including even National Night Out, it was discussed- The community meetings that we've held, that we've talked about, up to and including even National Night Out, it was discussed. And then also our social media monthly report from Chief Thomas to the community. This is a kind of, going to be a coordinated effort. Tuculpa and Kent are both gonna be using the same system. We're strategically placing our cameras along with those cities so we can maximize the coverage. So it doesn't make any sense for us to take a picture of a vehicle's license plate going, turning from eastbound Kent Des Moines Road to southbound Pacific Highway at Kent Des Moines Road if Kent is gonna have a camera at that location. So by coordinating, we can maximize the coverage and create a net so that something happens, amber alert or something like that, we at least have a direction on where that vehicle's going when it passes through these cameras. And these are real-time alerts. They will come up and tell the people, the officers that are working that that vehicle is driving through this intersection in a matter of minutes. So that we have something to work on and start going through. So we're gonna maximize our camera placement with our regional partners. Next camera. The initial contract for the 16 cameras, the software and the support is $48,000 for the first year and $42,000 for each of those cameras moving forward with the software and support. And the final contract is being prepared by Assistant Chief Kui and city staff for the approval at upcoming city council meeting. I can do my best to answer any questions about the systems. I don't have all the technical knowledge that Chief Kui might, but I'll try my best or get you an answer back. Any questions?
Assistant Chief, thank you. I just want to correct one quick thing. Preparing contract for final approval, what we'll do actually is it won't be next week. It'll be the following first meeting in November, just to clarify for council.
With that, we'll start with Councilmember Steinmetz and then move to you, Councilmember Nutting.
Oh, good, good evening, Assistant Chief Richards. Running police, running license plates is a fairly common practice among officers on patrol, isn't it?
Correct.
Can you explain what that process is and how this process would be a little different?
This will automatically alert us to vehicles that are already in system. What officers in the field do is they have to physically put eyes on every one of those license plates that they're running. Some officers are very proficient at it and will run 100 plates a night. Say, for example, they'll go through and every license plate in an apartment complex, or right now with the Ford pickups getting stolen, every time they see a Ford pickup, they'll run the plate. What this does is it takes that human side out of it, and it runs those plates and cross-references vehicles that are in the system and allows us to know whether or not somebody who's already been identified or a plate that's already been identified specifically is entering our city or going through.
Okay. And when an officer runs that plate, they're essentially looking for the same information. It just takes that much longer, and there's a human factor that can suggest all kinds of different things.
Right. And it's running plates while you're trying to drive at the same time and that type of stuff. And you're running every single plate, and so maybe one in 20 has some kind of an alert on her, or maybe it's one in 100 where this will go through and take that and automate that process for us.
Great. All right. And this is, the license plate is considered public information, so there's no privacy invasion here at all, is there?
No privacy invasion. No pictures are taken of anybody inside the vehicle. You won't catch me going to Dairy Queen.
I'll join you.
Let's go.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Assistant Chief Richards. Hopefully, this isn't too tough. So is, can, can this system be added on to? For instance, Kirkland just implemented a decibel meter to a camera system just like this to take picture of, of license plates and cars that have altered their exhaust and to process that to see who, who, who the offenders are constantly in an area. Is, is that something that we could, is this a system that we can add on to later with the same technology to possibly help the citizens of Redondo and, and possibly the highway as well?
I just heard that Cairo did a story on those cameras, and they're doing a test on that, and I'm gonna look into that. I don't know if these specific cameras can be used for that, or if it's a different technology that we're all gonna have to look at and see whether or not we can use to help with Redondo.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Assistant Chief. Is, hopefully, this isn't too tou, when, when the system flags a plate and the car is like at KDM and Pack Highway, but it's heading towards Federal Way, does it alert the Des Moines Police, or does it basically, you know, is it smart enough to say, hey, the guy's heading your way, you know, to Federal Way?
No, it's specific to us. If a vehicle, and so we can do the alerting to let, because of the short timeframe, we can let Federal Way know that this vehicle was headed that direction. Or our officers are on Pacific Highway a lot, and maybe one of them's sitting at 260th when the alert comes in, and they can wait for the vehicle to arrive, you know, and we can help alleviate whatever the problem was that put them in the system to begin with.
But it comes to the specific jurisdiction that you're in, and then it's, the onus is on the officer or the department to then, you know, say, hey, they're heading your way, and here you go.
Correct. Through, we would do that through valley.
So they can catch them, you know, correct. Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. The, the workforce multiplier is important here, and, you know, I don't know that folks caught that, but there's, there's a lot of different things, the tools that have been implemented in terms of workforce multipliers and visual, you know, consistent markings of cars and colors and, and all of that. But this is a really important one, and, and I think it's been, you know, with Councilmember Steinmetz and, and his comments, I, I think, point out to how important this is. And so thank you for that and looking at that. The other thing I, I wanted to point out as far as the, the community involvement, I just wanted for a point of clarification. You, you have the Police Advisory Board, and I just want folks to know that that's made up of citizens, not electeds. The electeds are in the, the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee. And so it truly is a citizen-driven advisory board to the police chief. So thank you.
Councilmember Oxegar.
I, I can see a lot of, you know, value here that you've, you've pointed out on this. I'm just wondering, is there any feedback or any pushback at this point from the ACLU or anybody else?
Not that I'm aware of, but I can look into it and find out. I know that there, across the nation, there's 1,500-plus agencies that are using this type of, this particular system. And I know of no pushback, but I would certainly ask the question and get back with you.
I, it, that's, you know, don't want to go into this blind, you know, we want to know.
Yep, exactly.
One from the other side. So thank you.
So you took, mentioned that after 30 days, the information gets deleted. I asked, I would assume that if, if one was tied to a case, though, that would be able to be extracted for the case and so forth?
Yes.
Okay.
Similar to like what's, we do with our in-car cameras, that we can flag a file so that it remains. And that if it's something that, you know, it automatically drops off it if it hasn't been flagged for a specific reason.
Okay. And then my next question has there, because it seems like Fedway, CTAC, Burian, and all the, our neighboring cities could greatly increase the net. Have they been discussed, or are they entertaining it at this time?
I know there has been some discussions by other agencies around us, but I don't know where they are in the process.
And Mayor, if I may, Patty, the Tuculpa and, and Kent, you know, have our independent police forces. Some of the, the, the cities you mentioned, CTAC, Burian, others, contract with King County. So it would have to be, you have to deal with the command staff at King County. It's always a pleasure. At any rate, but so, so there would be, you know, that would be something that would be a consideration as to which jurisdictions are choosing that. Hope I don't get a ticket for saying I said that.
Yes, it, in, in discussion, I think it might behoove us that Tuculpa, Kent, and, and ourselves, should we adopt this, might, it might behoove us to send a letter to the other cities, asking them to entertain as well, to get that support, to help our officers do their job as well. Councilmember Pennington.
Just to kind of add on to that question, if I recall correctly in, in committee, that they are reaching out to the other agencies, and, and there, there is consideration for that, for the, the other, so they're, they're aware of it. They're all talking together, and so it's, it's kind of there.
That's good to hear. Thank you. All right.
Okay. Thank you very much. Great job. I'd like to, Andrew, can you answer the question that came up during public comment about the park?
Yes, thank you, City Manager Mathias. Andrew Murgis, Public Works Director. For Cecil Powell, Powell Park, right now, I'm trying to get a team and a project manager to get that project moving again. It's been kind of on the shelf, on delay throughout the year, but I'm hoping in the next few months, we can get design back up and running. And then the comment about public bidding, that's when we put a contract out on the street for contractors to give us a price on it. And then construction would happen in '23. I know, I believe I sent you my email. You have my email contact. And what I would suggest is, if you can, contact me in about three weeks, and I can give you an update on where we're at with that process.
Thank you. Okay, there's a, just a couple more items here. Andrew, actually, as long as you're there.
I was gonna say, you can't let them go yet.
Yeah, that's right. Could you, could you talk just briefly about the right-of-way, what the value and importance of the right-of-way procedures are that's on consent?
Yeah, you bet. Andrew Murgis again. This is in relation to consent item number seven. And I want to provide a little bit of background here for you on the Washington State Department of Transportation Certification Acceptance Program. And this relates to the right-of-way forms or changing staff members on there. Next slide, please. So a little bit of background on the CA program, as we call it. So the Federal Highway Administration delegates to WashDOT, or the Washington State Department of Transportation Authority, for approving project development and construction administration activities. At that level through WashDOT, they then have the option to delegate some or all of that authority from the federal level down to agencies, qualified agencies, through a certification acceptance program. And just to note, only 61 out of 281 cities and towns in the state are actually certified under this program, and we're one of them. And it's, and it's great that we're there. So the benefits for being a CA agency is it saves time and resources in developing and advertising and awarding and managing our own projects or capital work, in which we use local, state, and federal money. Without that CA status, we'd have to contract with WashDOT as administrator to oversee all of the process and construction administration of our capital work. And that would just take, add tons of time, tons of cost to everything we do. Once an agency obtains CA status, it's, it's in place indefinitely unless it's rescinded, or there's a mutual agreement between the agency and the state on something that's modified. Next slide, please. So what can we do as an, as a CA agency following WashDOT guidelines? We can design projects. We can enter into right-of-way acquisition tasks. We can get into utility agreements, railroad, railroad agreements, standard consulting agreements, like when we contract with a consulting firm. We can, for projects, we can go through public hearings, findings, and orders. We can advertise projects publicly. We can award and execute those construction contracts as an agency. We can do our own material testing, which is great. And then we can award non-DBE and non-Federal Highway administered funded projects as well, too. So the consent item number seven basically is a right-of-way procedure staffing update. So every now and then, staff changes in the city, and the state, WashDOT, needs to know who is kind of managing the CA status program, if you want to call, who's kind of making sure we're following the rules. So the council item number seven updates more or less the public works director, since Brandon left. Puts myself in that role now as the license engineer that's required for CA status.
Thank you. Council, also talking about consent. So item number six, Des Moines Farmers Market Agreement for their holiday event. We want you to know that we anticipate Farmers Market coming to council on December 1st to give an update on their season and their resources and what their plans are and everything that they want to share with you. So that will happen on the 1st of December. Briefly, continuing the budget process. I know a number of you met or plan to meet with Jeff and Beth Ann. That's great. We will discuss the public hearing and budget next Thursday, or we will have the public hearing. Looking out at November 17th, so next week would be the first reading of the budget. November 17th will be the second reading, and it also involves property taxes and revenues and so forth, in addition to the city budget. And we also anticipate on the 17th that we will have a final report on the passenger ferry service. We got some nice publicity in the Business Journal from Mark Stiles today. And also, we will then, after the passenger ferry pilot service, we will plan to do our legislative agenda with Anthony Hempstead, looking forward to the coming year and having council identify priorities. And I have one last item. So it's kind of a pleasure to address the council. Really pleased to honor service in the city by Tim George, our city attorney. 15, yeah. So, come here. 15, yeah. Wow. Here's the pin. And if you want to make any comments about the mayor, just feel free.
Well, I wasn't expecting this. I didn't even realize. It just feels like yesterday. Well, I think in 15 years, this is the first time I've been applauded for, you know, so I understand the, the public commenter. Wow, yeah, no, it's been a long time. We've been through a lot as a city, as an individual. I love everyone here. I love my staff. I love the rest of the staff here. They're like family. You know, working with Michael has been amazing.
Yeah, thanks.
So yeah, thanks.
Cool. And I, I just want to say, when I started as city manager, and Tim very quickly became the permanent city attorney. And for a number of years, he was known as a consigliere, right from the Godfather. Because Tim was involved in everything. He has incredible judgment. He understands finance. He understands process. He's good, provides great legal advice, keeps us safe. So I couldn't say more, and I'm really proud to work with him and happy to acknowledge his service to our city. Thank you. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's report.
Thank you, Michael. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation. Item four, draft resolution 20-053, rescinding the COVID-19 proclamation of emergency. Item five, resolution to approve South King Housing and Homelessness Partnership 2023 Budget and Work Plan. Item six, 2022 Des Moines Farmers Market Holiday Market Agreement. Item seven, City of Des Moines Right-of-Way Procedures Staffing Update. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve the consent calendar as read.
Second.
And I have a second by Deputy Mayor Buxton. Is there anyone that wishes to pull an item? Seeing none? All those in favor of the consent agenda as, as listed, please raise your right hand. Passes 7-0, as the consent agenda should. All right. With that, I'm gonna read the proclamation for breast cancer. Whereas breast cancer is one of the most commonly diagnosed cancers among women, and whereas breast cancer is about 100 times more common in women than men, one in eight women will be diagnosed with the disease, and the diagnosis increase as patients get older. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month began in 1985 as a partnership between the American Cancer Society and the Imperial Chemical Industries Pharmaceuticals. And whereas... And whereas many organizations, including the American Cancer Society and Susan G. Komen for the Cure, hold community events, prevent promoting awareness, raising funds for research and provide progress in how breast cancer is diagnosed and treated. And whereas in Twenty-Twenty-Two, more than two, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand new cases of breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed. And whereas more than forty-three-thousand women die from breast cancer each year in the United States. And whereas increased breast cancer screening increases early detection, reduces death, increases life expectancy, decrease, decreases late-stage cancer diagnosis and increases five-year survival rates. And now, therefore, the City of Des Moines City Council wishes to recognize October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Signed this day, Matt Mahoney, Mayor. All right. This is, now we're going to move on to new business. This is a time for sole purpose of proposing new items that have not previously been before the council for discussion on a future agenda. This is not a time for questions about old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed businesses to the city manager at any time. Do any councilmembers have new business they would like to propose? Seeing none, we will move on to board and committee reports, and Councilmember Harris, I'm going to start with you today.
Thank you. Colleagues, uh, it's, uh, certainly been my goal, especially this last year, to, uh, deal with each of you with comity and try to avoid any kind of friction, but, um, the September twenty-seventh community meeting was a travesty. And there are times when one must say, you can't use words like it's concerning or worrying, you have to say, no, this is bad, because the public, um, only, you know, they, they have to hear things in ve- very plain language. The presentation was done without a microphone. There were twelve minutes of very weak Q and A that were shut off. The council voted last year for a virtual town hall proposal to budget exactly the kind of, uh, presentations that would have alleviated people's concerns and made them part of the process. And yet, several times this year, the council voted not to execute on that, and so I checked in at our last meeting to ask if we could actually get that done, to see if there was any kind of, uh, penance, um, and there was still no interest. And thus, my, uh, need to speak, because basically, we provided the appearance of engagement, not public engagement on the biggest capital projects that our city has done or will do. Beyond that, the city and the mayor, as the spokesperson, presented a completely different vision for that Marina. Like, I mean, it could not be more different, um, without briefing the council in advance or discussing that policy. And, um, I find that this to be an abrogation of council member, uh, manager government, okay? You just can't say, oh, whoops, we didn't realize these engineering difficulties. We spent a lot of time going through an RFQ process and voting for something. And then it just, hey, guess what, we're changing everything, guys. Um, that's not how local government is supposed to work. And today, I did read that Puget Sound Business Journal article, and it's just stunning to me that our ferry consultant is also working on a regional project, and the council has not been, uh, made party to that. It's not part of our whole planning. I'm not sure that the residents want to be part of that broader vision which conflates Kitsap and the Port of Seattle. I'm asking you to write the city council and support that virtual town hall process before anything else happens, because I'm telling you that if we've changed gears once, we'll do it again. And I'm angry about it. And second of all, I'm telling you, we need to have a Marina Committee, a standing committee exactly like all of our other, uh, five committees, basically to provide that layer of, uh, engagement with the public, and it needs to happen now so that it can be implemented next year. Not a single thing should go forward with that land side until the public has a seat at the table. And, um, I'm being so strident because basically, government is a learning organization and so are candidates. Everybody is watching what you do, not what you, you know, is said. If everybody just says, well, you know, we're going to just, um, maybe we'll deal with it next year and so on, you're educating not only the current council, but candidates, that this is the way things are supposed to work. It's not the way that things are supposed to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Moving on to Councilmember Pennington.
Okay, um, that's a tough act to follow. So, um, thank you all for showing up tonight and engaging. Again, I think the engagement and, and interest in your, uh, city and, and local government, more work gets done that way, more things get accomplished that way at a local level. So, thank you. And to staff, this has been a really great read, uh, it's, it's a lot, it's, it's what I'm holding up is the preliminary budget. Thank you all for the work that you've done on this, there's a tremendous amount of work that, that's gone into this, and I'm most of the way through it. So, thank you, and I, I'm sure I'll have more questions. And with that, um, I'm done.
Thank you, Councilmember Pennington. Moving on to Councilmember Steinmetz.
Thank you, there, there is a whole lot of information coming at us right now. Uh, it is mostly available on the website for anybody that wants to be engaged, uh, and see exactly what we're seeing, and so I'd encourage people, uh, to go do that. And if you have other questions, you know, write us, write the council, uh, write the city manager and, and, you know, very likely, you can get some answers to that. I think there's a lot of information out there, and I would encourage anybody to look into it. Thank you.
Moving on to Councilmember Oxegar.
First of all, I'd like to echo, uh, Councilmember Harris's comments, I think they were spot-on. And, uh, additionally, this week on Tuesday, I, uh, was at a dedication of the, uh, bench for former mayor, uh, Bob Shackler. And, uh, it was interesting that there were, virtually all of the public service, uh, groups here in town were in attendance, and recounting, you know, their relationships with Bob, and everybody was admitting that it, sometimes they could be contentious, but everybody was unanimously, uh, appreciative of the fact that Bob, you know, reached out and encouraged, pushed, uh, everything to get citizen involvement. And, uh, it was a very special moment. Uh, of course, Vic, Vicki, uh, his wife was there, Vicki, who used to work for, uh, our courts, uh, department. And, uh, it was a, a, uh, pretty, you know, powerful, wonderful, uh, experience. The, uh, bench is there by, it's just north of the quarter deck, and so, I think it was a fitting tribute. Um, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Oxegar. Moving on to Councilmember Nutty.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the only thing I have tonight, um, is, uh, Lighthouse Northwest is a domestic violence advocate. Um, I'm sure, uh, Deputy Mayor Buxton will speak a little bit more. No, okay. Um, as the father of two, um, beautiful girls, um, one in three women will experience domestic abuse regardless of age, socioeconomic status, race, religion or education. This can seem overwhelming, but there is hope, and that's a direct quote off of their website. They are holding a, um, event, um, celebrate the journey, uh, it's a dessert auction on Saturday, August twenty-second, from seven to eight-thirty, at the, uh, Mountain Church at two-zero-three-eight South, two-twenty-second Street here in Des Moines. And registration is required, and to register for that event, um, you can go to lighthousenw.kindful.com/e/celebrate-2022-2. And registration is free and the event is free, and, uh, they're just hoping to raise some funds for, uh, the help of domestic violence. And that concludes my remarks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Moving on to Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, thank you, Councilmember Nutty, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Since our last meeting, I participated in seven, about seventeen engagements with colleagues, staff, citizens, boards and committees, and I discuss, we had discussions and advocacy with regard to community events, regional leadership, DV awareness, community development, local and regional policy, affordable housing and homelessness, waste management, local governance, farmers market, public safety, human services and urban forestry. I thoroughly enjoyed and celebrated our community in the last couple of weeks. Notably, some, some notable items, the, uh, senior center had its grand reopening. You know, it's been kind of, uh, hard to operate out of that during COVID, they've been very, um, creative, but we have a great partnership with, it's, a lot of people don't know, with the Central Area, uh, Senior Center. It's, uh, it happens through this grant that we got, uh, from King County, so there's this partnership where we're back and forth, um, creating community with, uh, another culture, kind of like mixing cultures and also, uh, high concentration of the Latino community that come, uh, over there from C Mar. It was a beautiful celebration of these different cultures coming together, singing, dancing, music, food. It was fabulous, and I am so thankful that we were able to host it up there and, uh, that there's a way, uh, transportation is another part of that grant so that these communities can get together. There's shuttle services that enable this community gap, these community gatherings, so it's a great thing that we do here in our community, and I was thankful for that. Uh, Human Services Committee is, uh, just a update, we'll get, uh, something here in the near future, but they just finished making their recommended allocations for the next two years, and I'm really thrilled to have them come to, come to a council meeting here in the near future, giving us our, our recommendations about how we're going to support services in our community. Um, the holiday market is coming up on Saturday, November fifth, and I hope you all mark your calendars, that is going to be really, all, uh, three buildings and the shelter are all going to be used for that event down there, and that should be a really fun morning. Um, and I was going to mention what, uh, my council, my colleague, uh, talked about with domestic violence and awareness, and, uh, just, this is a big month for, uh, creating awareness, but I hope we don't forget about it any of the rest of the months. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First, I disagree with Councilmember Harris. I think it's a process that we, uh, we do our best to provide the best information that can be had in a, in a, something that's going to dictate our future. The public is represented, and it's from the stais alone is where that happens. We're the ones that, uh, we seek feedback, we offer up things, we get information, and inevitably make some of the decisions as representatives of the, of community. And that's the way it works. We're going to disagree, we're going to see things differently, but the fact is, is that, uh, it's a process. I will say, some colleagues work better with others than others do, and that's kind of problematic in this situation. Uh, getting into other things, um, South End Mayor's Meeting, I attended that. I told them, Des Moines is open for business, I told investors, developers and businesses to look seriously in our city and come here and, uh, have successes, because we were an up-and-coming city and we were one to be paid attention and reckoned with. Um, and, uh, one of the things is, I asked, Michael, you'll like this, I asked who had heard about the passenger ferry? And I expected to, an individual or two to not raise their hand and kind of pick on them or something, but even the waitstaff raised their hand. Even the waitstaff. Uh, so everybody knew about it, so the recognition put Des Moines on the map, and my compliments to you and your staff on that. I attended the SR3 fundraiser, Cornell, Cornell tournament, it was successful, they raised, uh, well over a thousand dollars, I believe, and it was a good time, a great organization. Uh, on October thirteenth, we were supposed to be, I moved the meeting, I think it was June, so we could attend the Mount Rainier-Fed away football game. The idea here was to build community. It is a priority to build community. Some in the community don't think that's a priority, which baffles me. But anyway, unfortunately, due to smoke in the air, they were, had to play the game on Friday, and Federway was victorious, forty-four to nothing, which shocked me because Mount Rainier's played some really good close games, so I thought the game would be closer. But my congratulations to the Federway Eagles. I wanted to make you aware of October thirty-first, Downtown Destination Des Moines will have its annual, um, Halloween event. The city council will be at the theater, as we have for the past few years. I invite my colleagues to join us, bring some candy and get to see the great cross-section of our community. So, I encourage you to do that, and also put on your radar, on November eleventh, we will be having a Veterans Day event at Stephen J. Underwood. The event actually starts at eleven-eleven, um, on that day, because that's, uh, that's the tradition. Uh, I am looking for some veterans that were deployed overseas that I would like to be speakers at that event, so if you know somebody, please refer them to me, I would appreciate it. The next meeting will be October twenty-seventh of, of this year, and, uh, we will, as we said, the, the budget will be the primary subject at that meeting, it'll be the first reading. And with that, do I have an adjourn, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? I see Councilmember, um, Steinmetz and a second? And I have a second from Councilmember Pennington. With that being said, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All right. Meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a safe weekend, and, uh, the rain's coming, so the air's going to clear up.